There you are. Awesome. Okay. Then I think we can start. So, hi everybody. For everybody who was in the parallel sessions, thank you so much for participating so far. Now we have the keynote and we're very excited to have Anya Sanic from UC San Diego, who has been working with John and knows the team for a very, very long time. So Anya, I don't know how much introduction she actually needs, but they just to for completeness, she has published in the Journal of Political Economy Management Size, The Review of Economic Studies, and she has done a ton of work on check and economics with experimental studies with children, it's like this. So the rules for this keynote talk is that Anya said she would like to take questions spoken or like not in writing. So just raise your hands whenever you have a question, be free to ask them throughout the talk. And then you can unmute yourself and go ahead whenever Anya is ready to take a question. Anya, the floor is yours. You have about an hour. And then the idea is that afterwards, we still have 15 minutes for like hanging out, talking a bit, Q and A, and asking you questions.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much for having me here. It's really fun to have all of you on. I'm going to tell you a bit about how experiments with children inform economics. And this is work I've been doing since 2010, when I started a postdoc in John List's group at the University of Chicago. And so at that time, it's kind of interesting because I came from a PhD at Purdue University, which is very much lab experiments, or at least I was very much only doing lab experiments with undergraduate students. And then I was thrown into this postdoc and suddenly we decided that it would be important to try to do experiments with three, four, and five-year-olds. So that was fun, because the first six months of that, I spent in a preschool, one-on-one with three, four, and five-year-olds, trying to figure out how to elicit time preferences, risk preferences, how to do dictator games. And at that time, there were a couple of papers by Bill Harbaugh, Kate Kraus, and Lisa Vestraland, which had looked at doing experiments with children. These were slightly older children, and this was in 2000. And then for about 10 years, nothing really happened in that field at all. And so I was referencing those papers quite a bit and trying to think about how best to design these experiments. So one of the kind of main things is we can't use monetary incentives with three, four, and five-year-olds who are testing using candy. That's why I've got candy here on my slide. And it was really very different. And one of the things that we learned through that process is that I believe economists have a lot in their toolkit that they can add to try to understand how to design these types of experiments. Yet we need to do quite a bit to translate those toolkits from the lab with undergraduate students to doing work with children. And so what I have done now is over the past, it's been like, I think, five years now, we've been writing this paper on how experiments with children inform economics. So this is a paper that's joint with John and also Reagan Petrie. So John and I have worked together on this project. I'm going to tell you a bit about it in the talk called "The Chicago Heights Early Childhood Center", or CHECK, and this is where we've done a lot of our experiments with kids, starting from age three all the way up to about age 13. And then Reagan has been working with adolescents or kids from third grade and up doing similar experiments. So we partnered together to write this paper, which is now been accepted at the JEL, but we also have on the NBR website, which goes through a lot of what I'm going to be telling you about, but goes into much more detail. So one of the things that we tried to do is summarize all the papers that have used a lab-type experiment with young children and summarize the methods that have been used with the idea that people could reference this paper now and try to figure out based on the experiments they're doing with kids, based on the age of the kids and so on, kind of what are the best practices that they could use? And we hope that moves the field forward as well. And through all that, I have lots of other co-authors who have worked with me on these projects, including Karen E., who's here in the audience, who's been doing some really excellent work with the CHECK kids and doing EG with them, which is very good. And then, of course, we have many, many research assistants who have worked on this, because as you'll see, as I'll talk about, doing experiments with kids can be much more challenging and require much more one-on-one interaction than doing a lab experiment, where you kind of put people in a room and there's 20 people, 20 computers, and they just go. So, let's see what I have. Let me start by telling you more about the Chicago Heights Early Childhood Center. So this is a program that we started in 2010. We ran for four years. And the idea was to be in a lower-income, high-minority neighborhood of Chicago, just south side of Chicago, it's called Chicago Heights, and try to figure out what are the best programs or investments that we can provide to children to reduce the academic achievement gap. And so over the course of those four years in Chicago Heights and the surrounding areas, we had 2,000 families that were part of this program. And our first question here was, how do we invest in children to reduce the academic achievement gap? So one of the things that we did as part of this field experiment is we randomly assigned different families to different interventions. We had one group that received a free full-day preschool, which was not available to the control children. We had another group that received a parent academy intervention, in which parents attended a school on how to teach to their kids at home, but the kids were not themselves intervened on. And we then had a combined program where the kids attended a preschool, but we felt it was very important for parents to be involved. So parents came in once every two weeks to meet with the teacher and learn how to scaffold the kids' learning at home. And so one of the things we've been doing now is we have short-term treatment effects of these programs. So one of the things we find is that random assignment to preschool makes children's cognitive skills better or academic skills better. So this is things like reading, writing, and math when they start kindergarten. The thing is that those skills, that pushing skills seems to fade over time. So now we're trying to understand why. We also find that assignment to the parent academy program improves executive functioning skills. So these are, we think of, they are cognitive, they're higher-order cognitive skills, but sometimes in economics, we might refer to those skills as non-cognitive in the sense that they're not kind of the main academic skills that we often think of. And those are things like working memory, so being able to keep a lot of information in your mind. And that's been quite interesting to see that these two different ways of intervening on families has a different impact on skills. And so that was one of the things. And I think that really illustrates one of the ways in which children are important for economics, is trying to understand how to intervene with them and how to improve outcomes for kids. This talk and the paper are more focused really on how to run experiments with children. So none of what I just told you about was a lab-like experiment. What we then did is we also ran lots of experiments in which we tried to understand child decision-making and child economic preferences. And that was the second aim here. And that's where a lot of co-authors came in. A lot of people worked with us on developing different types of decision tasks and trying to understand how kids reason and how kids learn at different ages. And so at the right, you can see some pictures of how that looks. I'm going to show you a video a little bit later, in which you can see kind of how we operationalize doing these experiments with young children. And so why study children? One is this first aim, understand children themselves for immediate purposes, how to intervene in education, how to intervene in health. We also want to think about children's choices that they make and how those input into the education production function that shapes outputs. This is quite important, and this is kind of why we might see medical studies on children as well, is to try to understand what types of treatments help children in the immediate. We also, as a second aim, want to think about behaviors and preferences of children as a way to provide insights into understanding adults. So we see heterogeneity and social preferences, time preferences, risk preferences among adults. How do those come to be? Is it the parents? Is it peers? How does the interaction between genetics and environment lead to these types of heterogeneities? And these are the types of things we can do through more vigorous experiments, or what I'm calling lab-like experiments, because I'm afraid of mixing up artifactural and framed from John's thing that he calls them. So, let's see. Decisions and economic preferences of children, how do they foreshadow adult behavior? And that, I think, is complementary to some other ways that we've been in economics, trying to understand preference development. So for example, neuroeconomics or even genoeconomics, and what are these kind of underlying factors that shape behavior? So this second point is more what I'm going to focus on today in this talk, is really how do we run these types of experiments? How do we design these types of experiments to maximize the learning that we get from them? I could take questions if people have some while I drink my giant California water. It would be fun if this was interactive, if people had like thoughts on what they think is important. Let me tell you, so you all are quiet so far, but let me tell you about the increase in interest in experiments with kids. So one of the things that my RA team, and it was led by this master student we had for a long time, Tarush Gupta, who since left, but he still keeps up with this and helps us out. But one of the things I have these RAs do over the course of these five years is really find every single paper that uses an experiment with children. And then we read all of them and tried to figure out what are the methods that are being used there and what are the goals of that study? So as I mentioned, in early 2000, we're the first couple that were run. And ever since then, we've seen a huge increase in interest in this area, which I find fascinating. And it's not just my papers with John, actually. You might be surprised. Laura?
I had one question, which is, you're saying that there's not that many experiments with children, but I think there probably have been, just like mostly outside of economics, right? We have child development departments and stuff like that. So how do you sort of like tie this into that history, I guess?
That's a great question. So one of the things, and I'm going to tell you about the... So the question is, how do we tie in some of these experiments that have been run? And in particular, I think in developmental psychology, with what I'm talking about is experiments in economics. One of the ways that I think they really differ is on the use of incentives and on the use of thinking about putting kids in a decision setting that's incentive-compatible. So the developmental psychology studies have actually started to, over the past 10 years as well, take on some of the methods from economics. So one of the ways you might have run a social preference experiment as a developmental psychologist 10 or 15 years ago would be to show kids videos of puppets sharing and then ask them questions about whether they felt that was a good choice or a bad choice. Or you might have puppets share candy between each other, and you might ask kids to split candy fairly between two puppets. But over the past 10 years now, what I've seen psychologists doing more of is the type of dictator game experiment that we might see in economics, which is, I put you in a setting where I give you the 10 candies, and I tell you, these are yours. Now you can decide how many to share between yourself and someone else. And some of these actually still take on the, you decide how much to share between yourself and a puppet. But some of them now do this, you share between yourself and another real person. And so when we were doing this summary of every experiment, we had a couple of criteria to determine whether it was going to be an economics-type experiment or not. One is, are there incentives? And two is, are you playing against, if you are partnered with someone in this, is it a real person? And so that's where, in what I'm going to show you, kind of the summary of all these studies, we include the developmental psychology when they fit in that. And I see that as psychologists potentially, I mean, they could have come to this on their own, of course, but potentially kind of psychologists learning from economics. And then in turn, in this paper and this talk, I'm trying to talk, I'm going to talk a bit about economists learning from psychologists, so maybe merging a little bit more. So it's a great question. So let me show you this graph. I was really excited to see this. So this is the graph. So you've got, on the Y-axis, the number of publications. On the X-axis, you've got the year. So you see these couple of papers, very influential for me, papers by Bill Harbaugh and his team, Lisa Vestraland and Kate Kraus. And then going forward in 2010, this is kind of, this blip is probably me and John starting to work on all of these things, and then it kind of takes off. So I get so many emails now of questions of, I'm going to try to run experiments with kids, tell me kind of how to run the incentives, or how can you share the instructions you use, and so on. And now we're seeing in 2020, for example, there were 40 publications that use an experiment with children. So this is a timely talk and paper, I think, because we're seeing this explosion in interest in this area. All right, so then, and this is again, good, related to Laura's question, what do economists then bring to the study of children? We already have developmental psychologists working in this area, and economists are here now too. So what do we bring? I think the parameters that we might be interested in could differ. So one example of this is, many people know about this marshmallow study that Walter Michel ran in the 1960s. And so this study, Walter has students, three, four, five-year-old kids, sit in front of a marshmallow for 15 minutes, and tells them that if you can resist eating this marshmallow, you can have a second marshmallow when the experimenter comes back. Then they observe the child, and they wait to see whether the child eats the marshmallow. He then finds, his team finds, that there's an association between waiting in this marshmallow task and later-life outcomes, like SAT scores and even labor market earnings. And that's, this is a parameter that they consider as inhibitory control. So when I'm sitting in front of this marshmallow, I'm trying to resist touching it and eating it, putting it in my mouth. So when we're doing this, we've run a bunch of these, we see kids kind of, if they know they're trying not to eat it, they'll sing a song, or they'll try to turn away and this type of thing. So they're inhibiting this reaction to try to pick up the marshmallow. On the other hand, one of the related constructs that we have in economics is time preferences. So in a time preference experiment, we might have, we might be interested in present bias. So this question of immediately versus in a while, as compared to in a while and the much, much longer time period. But time preferences or discount rates were pushing the decision with a front-end delay. And in fact, even when we're looking at present bias, it's typically a deliberative decision. So I'm typically making a decision about now versus later without having that marshmallow in front of me. And what we're seeing in the data when we run marshmallow tasks and we run a time preference task with little kids, where in both cases, we're using candy, we see that those two seem to measure different constructs. So inhibitory control seems to be slightly different than time preferences. And time preferences, as I'll talk about later, have some predictive power over later-life outcomes as well. So that's one area where I think we add. Another one is that we have a bit of a different training, and we have a stronger focus, I think, on identification and causality, where one of the things that's now been talked about in this Michelle Marshmallow study is that there could be an omitted variables problem. So it could be that perhaps some other factor, like trust in the environment or cognitive skills are also highly predictive of waiting or inhibitory control in that marshmallow task, and that may be what drives later-life outcomes. These are the types of questions that I think economists spend a lot more time thinking about than developmental psychologists. Another area is interest in outcomes rather than, or in addition to, interest in processes. So where developmental psychologists might be quite interested in the process that causes children to avoid eating the marshmallow or eating it, we are much more interested than in tying that type of behavior to some outcome, like SAT scores, labor market outcomes, et cetera. So I think that's where we add as well. And then we have this toolkit of incentivized context for elicitation tasks from the lab that now I think is being applied already in developmental psychology, and I think it's a useful toolkit. All right, so let me give you, I was going to talk about three things today. So one is kind of, what do we know? There's a very good paper, we have the paper that you should read that I'm talking about today, but there's a very good paper also by Mathias Suter that came out in 2019 that goes through in great detail the developmental trajectories of risk, time, social preferences of young kids, also looking at differences by age and differences by gender, and doing an excellent summary of all of these papers. So it has a much different aim than our paper, which focuses a bit more on methods. His paper is very good at trying to learn. If you want, if you need information about kind of what are the gender gaps in risk preferences by age, this is a great paper to read. So I encourage everybody to read it. I'm going to talk about what we think is left to learn. And then I'm going to talk about how we use this toolkit, this lab experiments toolkit, how we bring that to children. I'm going to stop here again and see if people want to be interactive and have thoughts. See some of our RAs and postdocs here. So maybe I should start calling on people. All right, I won't do that. Okay, talk about what we know. One of the things I think is important to document before we proceed with all this is to understand whether children are making choices at random or whether they're making choices that exhibit some sort of rationality. I think that's quite important, because if we're going to be thinking about how theory predicts behavior, if we're going to be trying to organize children's behavior in some kind of theory, this is a key point. So the early papers by Harbaugh, Kraus, and Vestraland have looked at this. And there's quite a bit of recent work by Brokaw and Correio, who were previously my colleagues at USC, who have shown that children exhibit rationality in a variety of settings. And I think that's really nice research to take a look at. And then early on, in the early 2000s, John List and his colleagues, actually, when they were doing the studies in the sports card markets, trying to understand trading behavior, they had in their studies of trading behavior of children, and they found that children also exhibited, experienced children also exhibited similar behavior to adults. And that's nice, that, those are a nice set of papers to read as well. So what this means is that we can use data from children to develop models, make predictions, organize our thoughts. I think that's quite important. One of the caveats here, though, is that when we're doing experiments with children and we see that behavior is random, we have to be really careful, because we don't really know if it's our measurement instrument that's a poor fit for the level of cognitive development of the child, or if it's that in fact, the child's decision processes are not yet fully developed to try to understand these problems. So I think that's something that's useful to keep in mind very generally. We know also that child preferences and decisions evolve through time. So for example, and this is covered in our paper, but also Suter's, children seem to become more patient with age, and can see that by running different experiments with them. There's also heterogeneity in child skills and preferences that emerges quite early, even at ages three, four, and five, kids look very different from each other. And some studies have looked at associations with demographics. So there's a whole literature on gender differences and competitiveness, and showing how those seem to emerge at young ages, especially during adolescence, that girls become less competitive than boys in tasks that are quite similar to the lab tasks. And some work also on socioeconomic status is measured by household income or parental educational attainment that affects, or affects, or is associated with child skills and preferences. And people have also looked at skills and preferences. So for example, one of the work, there's some work by Dan Benjamin and others, and so work by us as well, looking at child math skills and how they're associated with risk and time preferences. This is the kind of work that has been done quite a bit. A little bit of less work on parents. And parents seem to matter. So there's some studies showing that parents' economic preferences are associated with their kids, suggesting intergenerational transfer of these preferences. But we don't always see that. And one of the reasons I think that is, is it's difficult to compare parents to children, particularly when we use different tools to measure, say, social preferences in children versus parents. And there it's hard to know whether, when we don't see an association, if it's that there isn't an underlying association, or that the tools that we use to measure differ, and so the construct differs. And the other kind of problem with some of this work is that we'll see different studies across ages of kids that are conducted in different countries by different researchers, using slightly different methods. And then we try to make, we try to talk about, okay, my work with three, four, five-year-old kids and association to parents, but let's compare that to someone else's work on adolescent kids and association to parents in a different country. It's hard to compare across. And so more work needs to be done on the same sample over a larger, probably over a larger set of socioeconomic status variables and so on, to really understand that question, I think. Peers also seem to matter. So there's this Gautam Rao paper that's quite interesting on random assignment to dorm rooms and trying to understand social preferences and how they change based on who you're assigned to live with. And some other work on more lab-type experiments with little kids, just manipulating whether your decision is made in private or in public that seems to affect behavior as well. So parents seem to matter, peers seem to matter. As I mentioned, it's really difficult right now to compare across studies. So one of the things that we hope you do, if you're interested in pursuing this area, is to read our paper and really see how to, not only what we think is the most useful way to conduct experiments by child age, but also what we think you should report about how you ran the experiment, so that we can later compare across different studies. Here. Okay, we also are finding, and this is a paper that myself, Reagan Petrie, and Marco Castillo, and John List are working on. That is our, right now, at the JPE. We're trying to understand how different early life skills affect later-life outcomes of kids. So this is one of the really nice elements of the Chicago Heights Early Childhood Center studies. We started that project in 2010. We continue to collect data on these kids and their parents every year. And now these kids and parents are adolescents. And we can really look at these early life skills, this marshmallow test that we ran with kids when they were four, the time preference experiments we ran with these kids when they were four, how that's now associated with later-life disciplinary referrals. One of the, there are two interesting aspects of that paper. The first is that when we collect this comprehensive data set of skills and economic preferences, we actually find that economic preferences, academic skills, and executive functioning skills each map onto three different underlying factors. And that executive functioning skills, which incorporate inhibitory control, kind of that marshmallow task element, are associated with later-life disciplinary referrals. So this is how likely you are to be sent to the principal's office, for example, in third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade. If you are better in your working memory, better at inhibitory control, you're less likely to see those disciplinary referrals later. But even while controlling for executive functioning skills, we see that our time preference task, in which I'm asking you whether you want fewer candies today or more candies tomorrow, that task, if you choose more candies tomorrow, you're also less likely in these third, fourth, fifth, sixth grades to have disciplinary referrals. So it seems that economic preferences, in particular here, time preferences, are also an important factor in human capital development, which suggests that this is a very good reason why we might care about measuring it in children. And I just explained the study here. One of the reasons we're using disciplinary referrals is because there are other studies showing that these predict later-life outcomes. So we're using these as a proxy or as a surrogate for looking at later-life outcomes, which we haven't captured yet. One way to capture that would be to look at high school graduation rates or enrollment in college, which we'll see in the next three or five years here with this sample. All right. Any questions before I continue? Okay, people are very quiet. I think if we were in person, people would talk.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Do you also look at the predictive power of these economic preferences on things other than human capital development, like some psychological traits, or like personality traits, or happiness, mental stability, things that are important, not just from the labor market perspective?
Yeah, so we have that data. We have not looked at the associated... Yeah, so we have that data. We have not looked at the associations with that data. One of the things we did when we came back to survey the kids the last couple of years, now that they're older, is we are measuring questions, we do have questions about mental health. We haven't figured out a great question about happiness. We should actually add that. I think that's a great idea. I think one of the things that you struggle with when you start doing this is you really have to figure out at what age you can start asking some of these questions. And I think definitely now that these kids are early adolescents, it's a good time to ask wellbeing types of questions. That's an excellent point.
Thank you.
Christine.
Hi, yes. So thinking about like the marshmallow experiment, there's a certain element perhaps of, you know, the child thinks, what do my parents want me to do? Or what does the adult, what should I do according to the adult? Do you think that there's that same element potentially in things like time preferences, where they might think, okay, I should wait versus what they actually prefer to do? Do you have any thoughts on how that might play out and how economics might be different with their incentives and the way they do experiments to get at that?
Yes, I think that's a very good question. So this idea that what, whether I am revealing my true underlying preferences or whether I'm simply doing what I think adults should tell me I should do. I do think there's, there's some work among undergraduate students in lab experiments looking at this rule-following question and how it is associated with economic behavior. So I think applying something like that to children would be quite useful. We talk about the experimenter demand effects in our paper, in particular, because in a lab study with undergraduate students, typically you tell them you're making decisions anonymously or confidentially on your computer. We're not going to look at it. Whereas in a lot of studies with little kids, you really kind of sit there with them and are helping them through the task, understanding the task. So some of the time, we try to turn away when they're making the decision or we try to make it as kind of private as possible, but it's much harder with little kids. So definitely figuring out a way to capture a measure of, if what you're worried about is that those two are associated, figuring out a design that allows you to capture this measure of rule-following and then controlling for it, I think would be quite an interesting study that I haven't seen anybody look at with kids. So that's an excellent question. Let me see. What is left to learn? I wonder why I did it this way. I think this, what time is it? This is a good time to show, show our video of, of how we run these tasks, maybe instead of talking about this. So let me try to do that. It's not quite in the right order, but we're in the middle. Where is it? Right, I'm going to show how we run experiments with three-year-olds as a little break from looking at me. So let me share my screen. Right. So this is like the youngest that you could run this. And we're going to look at how we do time preferences, which is at 9:50. Do you see my screen? You should, right? I think so.
Yes.
Okay. So I think this really is going to show you how we change the studies for this younger age group. Trying to find, how do I go to nine? 9:50 is when we do the time. And this goes to Christine's question about what kids think they should be doing too. So that, that part will be fun. Let's see, there we go.
We're going to choose one of those at the end of all the activities, and that'll be the one that we spin, okay? Now we're going to play a game where we make choices about candies. For each game, I'm going to show you a plate of candies, and you decide which plate you want. Some plates you have, some plates you choose you can have later today, and some plates you choose you can have tomorrow. Like last time, you'll only play, we'll play a few games, but only one will be the one that counts. After we play each game, I'll put your choice in one of these boxes, and I'll put the boxes in the this bag. And at the end, we'll pull one out, and that'll be the one that counts. If you choose the today plate in the game that counts, you get to take those candies home later today. And if you choose tomorrow in the game that counts, you get those candies tomorrow. We don't know which game will be the one that counts until later. So when you make your decision in each game, you should pretend that's the only game and it's the only one that counts. These are the two plates. If you choose this plate, you can have all the candies on it today. And if you choose this plate, you can have all the candies on it tomorrow. So before we start, can you show me which plate? If you pick, if you pick this plate, when can you have the candies on it? If you choose this plate, when can you have the candies? You can have the candies on this plate today.
I want to trick or treat to get candies too.
You want trick or treating? That's fun. If you choose this plate, when can you have the candies on it?
Tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. So, let's start. Do you want these candies today or these candies tomorrow? You want these cans today or this tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
So that's, that's, let me see, I want to show, let's do, let's do the dictator game. So then we go through a couple of these, and then the dictator game is, is it 10:30? No, 13:11. The dictator is the one that is the easiest, I think, for.
You are going to decide how many coins to keep and how many coins to send to another little girl who didn't get to play this game, so she didn't get any coins. So you don't know where the other girl is, and she doesn't know who you are, but she'll get all the coins you send to her. You can keep as many coins as you want, and you can send none, some or all of the coins to the other girl. Any coins you decide to keep, you'll put them on your plate here. And any coins you want to send to the other girl, you'll put them on her plate here. We're only going to do this part one time, and you just take home the prizes you buy with the coins on your plate, and the other girl will get to buy prizes with the coins on her plate. So before we start, can you show me which plate's Nora's plate? Uh-huh, and which plate's the other girl's plate? Yeah, all right. Go ahead and decide where to put the coins on your plate and the other girl's plate. Remember, it's up to you to decide. You want to put the coins on that plate? Go ahead and put them there.
All right, so I thought it's nice to see, because when I, when I first started working in Chicago Heights, we really had no idea how we would translate these lab experiments that we've been running with undergraduate students to really, really young kids. We piloted a lot, these types of survey questions, and really did a lot to try to understand how to fit with developmental cognitive development of little kids. And so a couple of the things that you would see in that video. So one is we do a lot of physical props. So everything is very physical, you're moving things around. And we're not requiring any productive vocabulary. So when you have really small kids, there's a difference between the emergence of productive vocabulary and receptive vocabulary, where productive is, I can speak to you and I can tell you things. And receptive is, I can listen to you and I can understand what you're saying. So we often might assume that kids aren't understanding because they're not speaking, but in fact receptive vocabulary emerges earlier. So everything that we do is with physical props and pointing at this young age. And we carry that through to even older ages, because I think that anything you can do to simplify instructions for any age of your subjects, this applies mostly to kids, but also with adults, also with different types of populations with lower literacy skills, for example, can be very helpful. So one of the things that we, you might see is these physical props, the pointing. You can see we're not using money here, we're using candy and toys. And one of the things that we actually use mostly now, and what I've seen other studies use for all ages, is a prize store. And so the, you saw in the dictator game that Nora was choosing between putting coins on her plate or this other girl's plate, the coins later she can use to buy things in this store. And the store can have many different incentives that appeal to different ages. And so by that way, we can sort of standardize the incentive by age and can look at associations of preferences or behavior, decision-making over age, while making sure that all children find the incentive that we're using equally preferable. That's actually one of the concerns with looking at experiments of kids through age is that it's difficult to know whether it's the preferences that are changing or just the preferences toward the incentive that are changing. This is one of the kind of limitations, I think, when looking at experiments with kids is depending on the incentive that you use, you have to be really careful that what you're not measuring is just that some kids like stickers and some kids don't. We actually found out with the marshmallow task, which was interesting. We piloted doing the marshmallow task with marshmallows initially, and then we found out that lots of kids don't like marshmallows. And so then we changed it where we first had kids choose their favorite snack, and then we used that snack. And so we ended up having a little bite-sized Snickers bars ended up being much more kind of desirable to many more kids than marshmallows were. So my, my RAs were joking that maybe in the 1960s, when this was first run, marshmallows were good, but now we have so many better snacks, I guess people's preferences have changed. So I have a question. Yuval?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask, how does this store standardize the preferences across ages? Do you, I don't know, measure the willingness to pay of different ages to the things in the store in a, in a sense that a coin is worth the same way to each age or something? How do you standardize that?
So it's very tricky to do. It's a good question. There are a couple of different ways that we thought about incentives. So one is we just use candy or we just use stickers. One is we use this prize store, and the third is obviously money, which I think is very difficult to do with really little kids. But one of the concerns with, say, using stickers or candy is that you use it for age three, four, and five, and then you start comparing to eight-year-olds. And eight-year-olds might not find the same candy delicious, or they might not really care about stickers so much. And so that's where we have this store, where within the store, there's all sorts of different toys that kids could have. And usually, we, we don't change the conversion rate of the coins to the toys. But one of the things that I think should be done, if you are doing a study with a large range of ages of kids, you want to think about perhaps, if you do switch up incentives or you add new incentives that are better for older kids, for example, you could think about having a group of kids who are in the middle of those ages who do, some of them do one and some of them do the other. That's not just for incentives, but anything that you do across age. If you have an overlap group of kids of the same age who do both, then you can compare the effect of changing up your incentive or changing up your design. So one of the ways people change up their design as kids get older too is maybe you're doing one-on-one instruction with really little kids, like we did in the video. And then when the kids are eight, nine, and 10, now you have three kids in a group and one experimenter. So you might want to test whether that impacts behavior by having some of the eight-year-olds get one administration and some get another. So those are the types of things we can do.
Great, thank you.
Good. Luisa?
Yes, thank you very much. So first of all, thank you for the video. I think that was extremely useful to understand how this kind of experiments are carried on. My question is concerning the coins. So do the kids know in advance the value of each coins? Meaning they have the possibility to look at the store, know how, okay, certain toys can be valued and so on? So do they have a perception of the value?
Yes, so that's really important. I think it's very important at the beginning of the study to show the kids what the incentive is. So we always show them the store, and they get to see all the different prizes in it, kind of look through them. I think that's important for incentive compatibility, because if they never knew what the prize was going to be, it would be really hard to have good control. When you have undergraduate students, they know they're getting money, they know what that money could buy them, right? And so we do that. One of the ways that we really, really simplify the stores for young ages, we just make one coin equal to one prize, because I think that's the easiest. And that's in fact quite important in general, is that we try to avoid any time having the kids count things or having them do math-heavy activities. And so in everything that we do, say, the kid is three, four, five, but even six, seven, I never say to the child, tell me how many stickers you want to put on your plate and how many you want to put on the other girl's plate, because counting emerges later. And the thing that emerges first is just having a general knowledge of what is more and what is less. But being able to count things is a different skill a little bit. And so that comes from these studies on numeracy that, that are important. Another, another thing that's important to note from that, the video, is we do a lot of questions on understanding. So we ask them, which one's your plate and which one's the other girl's plate? And if they aren't able to say, we repeat the question. And we also record whether they understood it on the first try so that we can look at robustness to difference, using different samples. Let me see, what should we do? I can tell you about... Do you guys want to hear more about the different toolkit stuff? Like other things we've thought about child development? Should we do that next? Let me go back to my screen. There we go. So I tried really hard to have this like really nice picture for you. So this is our toolkit, but really that's our toolkit, the lab, right? And so the question is, how do we go from this lab to a setting more like this, like the one in the video? And we want to learn from the sister sciences, so developmental psychology, education, neuroscience. Want to understand how to design studies that align with the competencies of the children. Want to understand how these competencies emerge, which we get from developmental psychology. What we get from education is educators are very good at explaining things to kids, right? So we want to learn from them and try to replicate some of the things that they're doing as well. Want to understand the limitations of children. And then when we face limitations, develop tasks that require low, lower-level skills to complete. And there's five competencies that we've identified in our, in our research, just reading through all these articles in developmental psychology. One is numeracy. So as I mentioned, being able to make comparisons between piles of objects or incentives, that's what's called foundational numeracy, that emerges quite early. So even at age three, a child can tell you which plate has more, which plate has less. But formal set knowledge, such as counting, so being able to count to three objects and know that those three make up a set, and there's not more than three in that set, that emerges later. Multiplication, division, fractions emerge even later. However, even by age three, four, and five, psychology studies have shown that children understand fractions when you show them to, to them with spinners. So you can do things that explain probability in a very physical way that is going to make a child as young as age three understand, even though probability, the concept, at least in the US, is not taught in math classes until kids are about 12 years old. So when we're thinking about lab-type experiments with kids, we want to think about numeracy especially, because a lot of the questions that we're asking kids have to do with making a decision in which some probability is involved or some counting is involved. So this is what we do. We use physical props, pictures, and spinners. Literacy is important, and this is a pet peeve of mine generally. I think instructions in the lab are also often too complex. There's this great feature on Word where you can test the grade level of your text. So I always try to test the grade level of my text. And if you look at research in health communication, actually, they spend a lot of time figuring out the optimal grade level of texts that explain health concepts to patients. And so you And so you really want to be below eighth grade reading level on all your materials, even in the lab, I think. Anything you can do to reduce the grade level, I think is useful for any subject population. I talked a bit already about productive and receptive vocabulary and how using pointing can help us to get at what decision children wanted to take even without having them speak. So that's quite important for the very young age group. But everyone, reduce the complexity in your instructions, please. All right, let's see, executive functions. This is one that we measure with all of our kids. One of those is working memory. So being able to manipulate several facts at once in your head is very hard. And so you really want to think about, how do I, if I'm going to explain something quite complex to children, and I have a colleague now in Italy who's trying to do some studies with prisoner's dilemma games and third and fourth graders. We're really trying to think about how to pictorially represent some of these concepts so that they don't have to keep in their mind all of the different possible outcomes of the game. And I think thinking about working memory and how it develops is important there. Focus and attention also quite important. And then controlling impulses too. So any task that we run, you want to make sure there isn't an impulse component of it that's going to change the behavior. Abstract thought is quite important. So thinking about anonymous partners or thinking about future events may be challenging for young kids. So anything you can do to try to make these concepts more real or salient, I think is useful. Theory of mind is a really neat concept, which is about being able to separate your own information set from that of others. So if I hide a toy and then you weren't in the room when I hid the toy, and then you come into the room, do I understand that you don't know where the toy is? Or do I think that you know where the toy is because I know where it is? So this is fun, this develops around age three, four and five. But it's kind of fun to see how some kids have completely different information sets than others. So if you're thinking about something like trying to measure whether children at three, four and five understand deception, you want to understand how that is correlated with this concept of theory of mind. So some of these competencies, you want to measure them because you want to understand how they co-evolve with the concept that you're interested in testing. And sometimes you just want to measure them because you want to understand what level of control you have in your task. So do these kids actually have the level of ability that allows them to understand your task? Or are they going to be choosing randomly because they don't quite understand? All right, this was my example that I just ran. So why do we evaluate? Many skills emerge at the same time as the concept you're measuring. You might be interested in understanding how those are interrelated with each other. We also want to include questions on understanding in the experiment to provide experimental control. You can use that as a robustness test later as well. And then we should standardize. So if we do a better job having similar standards across experiments with kids, it's going to be easier to compare across papers. Okay, and there are 257 papers that we've summarized in this paper that you should read, our NBR article with the same title as my talk. So you can really see across age groups, what are the different ways that people operationalize incentives? What are the different ways that they elicit the responses from children and adolescents and so on? All right, so you can see our paper for that, everybody should read it. I'm going to now, because I kind of hopped around because I was so excited to show you guys some videos. Going to now go to this what's left to learn question. But before I go there, I'm curious whether some of you I know have done experiments with children or you're very interested in this topic. Maybe people from the audience can tell me what you think is the most important or interesting questions in this arena.
Night jumping?
Yeah.
I haven't done anything with children, but I'm just curious like, is there anything documented about like how early gender differences survive? I mean, show us, like in early childhood, like at what age? And you know, what types of gender differences?
So questions about when gender differences emerge?
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
So I think that the Suter article does a really good job of summarizing gender differences by age. One of the things that I thought was interesting, I ran a study with the three, four or five year olds that were in the Czech sample back 10 years ago. And I found that we already saw gender differences in competitiveness at age three, four and five with girls and boys. So boys were put in more effort when they were under a competitive compensation scheme in this lab type study that I ran than the girls. And that's already by age three, four and five. So some of these effects emerged really early. One of the other things that I think is useful for understanding how those emerge is looking at the behavior of parents. So I have one other paper with John and co-authors in which we look at actually parents lying behavior, which is my only paper on lying. But we're looking at whether parents are in this study where they have the option to lie to win a prize. And we vary whether their child is in the room with them or not when they're making this decision. So we find first of all, that overall, when the child is in the room with them, the parents are less likely to lie to get the prize. But it's driven primarily by daughters, so it's driven by girls. So parents are much less likely to lie when it's their daughter is in the room than not as compared to parents of sons or parents of boys. And so I think looking at this question of how adults behave around children by gender can help you understand more of this, not just when do differences emerge, but what is the source of differences emerging, right? So I think that's an excellent question. Hernan?
Hi, Anya, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you. So regarding the changes in preferences, a former undergraduate student of mine, we ran a field experiment in an entertainment park. It's in her thesis, but it's in Spanish. It's in Quintana, so we see also an emergence of difference in preferences for competitiveness around the age of six or seven. The question that I have is like, if you have seen something regarding shocks and changes in behavior of childrens or shocks into their parents and changes in behavior of childrens. We have done some research on adults or undergraduate students with shocks to their endowments. I think that is a topic that hasn't been developed a lot, but it will be interesting to see how, especially in Latin America, where you have like, I don't know, your parents could lose a job or like recent years, like have been very difficult with COVID. It would be interesting to see if some of the children's skills help them to cope differently with the shocks when they are to themselves or when they are to their parents. I don't know if you know any research on that line.
So that's a good point. And actually, this is where I was going to go with what is left to learn is I think we now have done a lot to understand correlational data, like how socioeconomic status correlated with economic preferences of kids or behaviors of kids, the associations of gender, et cetera. But one of the things that we need to do more of is looking at causal impacts. So what is the causal impact of something like an income shotgun behavior? So I think that's going to get us, when you have an exogenous shock and then you look at behavior, that's again, using some important tools from economics, which is this obsession with causality that we have, which is really important. Like that needs to be brought in to this research on just looking at associations. There's the couple of papers that I was going to mention in that area are Armin Fokh has this paper on random assignment to mentoring programs and looking at the effect on preferences. We are looking at random assignment to early childhood programs and then the effects on preferences. And I think there's a couple of papers looking at being exposed to political upheaval or natural disasters as well on economic preferences. And they've looked at kids as well in that. But I do think you're right, this is kind of the direction that I would say we want to move in more is trying to understand causal impacts of different things. And especially income shocks, because I think that's a really big one that is important to look at.
Thank you.
Thanks. I had another hand raised for a moment. Hi, Chris.
One of the things that, at least in some of the education work that I do, that is always a, let's say, a persistent question that we have around doing interventions that affect the outcomes for fifth graders or third graders or so on, right? Whether it's a health intervention or education intervention, and we're seeing some immediate change in their outcomes. One of the things we don't really know is how persistent are these to when it actually matters, to actually when they enter the workforce eventually and so on. So when we're talking about some of the things left to learn, that pops into my mind are just really investing in some of these longer term studies to figure out if when we cause them to read a year earlier, whether that causes them to have higher reading ability by the time that they are done with, done in school and these types of things. And I don't think that we have a great handle on that, although there's been some work in the area. And I see that as something that we really have to figure out.
So I agree, that was going to be on my slides too. So this is great, we don't have to look at my slides. I think the long term outcomes are really important. And I think the reason that they're not done so much is because of the investment involved. So if you're on a tenure clock or you're a graduate student, you can't sit and wait for 10 years for long term outcomes. And then often it's hard to get funding for those as well, I think. Because you see this short term outcome, everybody wants to fund the new fun, interesting new study, looking at getting kids to read earlier. And then I think getting funder to be interested in. And then 10 years later, what happened to these kids is harder. So I think it's a really uphill battle. But now I do see, so for example, the Journal of Health Economics used to 10 years ago publish papers on, I ran this intervention to get kids to eat healthier. And then I looked the next day and they were eating healthier. If you try to submit something like that to the Journal of Health Economics, they'll say like, why does that matter? We need to look at what happens in six months or a year. So I think looking at long term outcomes is very important. But one of the other things I've been thinking about in that area is that we have somehow had this idea that any intervention we run should only be, is only good if there's a long term outcome. So everything seems to be about like, can I, at least in this food choice domain, I've seen like, okay, I've run this incentive intervention, now we need to form habits, we need to see a long term outcome. Or even this early childhood program, this preschool, we need to see the long term outcome now. But I think we're missing a bit too, this question of maybe we can't expect a long term outcome. So maybe we need scaffolding and we need, when these kids are in a high quality preschool, maybe they need to stay in a high quality program to do well. So there's part of this, which is we evaluate effectiveness of programs based on their long term outcome. And there's part of this where maybe we shouldn't be expecting a long term outcome. Maybe we do need, if we run an incentive based intervention, to come back. And in a couple of months, we up it and keep doing it because we can't just rely on habits to form and stay. So that's kind of what I think, what are your thoughts do you have?
I think you're spot on. It's more about really understanding what needs to come together, like in a big package for overall improvements in the long run. And so we might be giving them the foundation on which additional things can be built. But if they're not in an environment that gives them the additional opportunities to build upon the foundation that we provide them, like, how widely do we want to implement these programs and where? And how should we target them and so on? And what else do we have to use the compliment, bring in to compliment them?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. It's tricky, it's an interesting question. Yuval?
Thank you, I wanted to follow up on the environment question and ask you if you think that some of the things that you learn in Chicago Heights are general to the children population of the world and some are more specific to the narrower environment, as narrow as the specific children of this community?
I think that's a very good question. So whether when we run a study in Chicago Heights, it's going to be representative of all children worldwide or not? I think it's definitely not. I think we have to be very careful thinking about how different insights scale. So everyone should attend, that's coming tomorrow, right? John's voltage effect talk and read his paper and buy his book and buy his books. But I think that is something that is an issue everywhere. So we think about lab experiments with undergrads. Those clearly are specific to undergraduate students. I think these field studies with children, definitely the cultural and social context plays a role. And you want to take that into account when you're drawing conclusions. And I think trying to have a theory that guide you in thinking about which part of this could be culturally based, which part of this behavior could be culturally based versus which part we think is culturally independent or could apply across is important. And then rounding replications in other samples is important. So one of the things we've done, we've collected data. I have a colleague, Jen Pate, in Los Angeles, and she has access to a higher socioeconomic status preschool. We've collected a lot of data on kids there to compare then these lower income kids in Chicago to these higher income kids in Los Angeles and try to maybe see which of the insights that we're finding are universal across and which aren't. It's hard to do because different researchers have access to different samples. So being cognizant of the fact that your sample is probably not representative of every child in the world is good. And then standardizing the way that we run things, the types of incentives we use, the type of language we use in our instructions across samples, across researchers and research groups, I think is a helpful way to try to start getting an understanding. So it's a very good question as well.
Great, thank you very much.
And so my other takeaway in what I think is left to learn is that now, when we're doing interventions with children, trying to understand something like how to improve educational outcomes, how to improve health outcomes, I think it's not enough anymore to just find a treatment effect. I think it's very important to try to understand mechanisms and try to involve theory, try to involve treatments in the study that allow you to understand some mechanisms through which actually you're seeing an effect. I think that's kind of the, so we've got causal, trying to look at causality, long term effects. And then this question about mechanisms. And then Yuval's question as well about representativeness, I think is quite important. So we talk about that as well in the paper.
Anya, we're like about to end the keynote session, but there's afterwards, like there's a break of 15 minutes. So if you want to, you can just keep talking and have conversations. But the session started in itself, it's going to end nowish. And then at 11, your time, the parallel session starts.
Thank you, everyone, for joining.
Okay, so then I think, if you're okay with that, Anya, if there are no more questions, then we, all we have left to do is thank you so much for this keynote, this was extremely interesting. And then hopefully, next time we see each other, all in person.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Everyone.